I'm the only one that did reference first.
Okay, one, two, three, four, five, six, and Shelton's not here.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Pittsvenny County Planning Commission. Regular meeting Tuesday, August 5th. The time is 7:00 PM and we'll get started. If you would, roll call at least.
Yes, sir, excuse me.
You gonna hear it? Go ahead.
Yeah, I got it. Well, I thought I had it. Yes, Mr. Webb.
Here.
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Mr. Shelton. Ms. Mies.
Here.
Mr. Dalton. Mr. Oaks.
Here.
Ms. Henderson.
Here.
Mr. Harker.
Here. Thank you, sir. If you would, please stand and join me for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hearing of the city citizens, is there anyone here tonight to address this body concerning a matter that is not on the agenda? Hearing no one will move on to approval of the agenda. The floor is open for a motion on the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion. We approve the agenda.
Motion by Mr. Webb, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Oaks, thank you, gentlemen. Please cast your vote when prompted.
Mr. Harker, can I get your vote verbally?
Uh, yes. Motion to approve the agenda is presented, passes, six yes, zero no. Floor is now open for the, a motion on the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion we approve the minutes.
Motion by Mrs. Mies, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Brown. Please vote when prompted. Motion to approve the minutes passes, six yes, zero no. Chairman's report, I would just like to offer my prayers and the prayers of this body for Councilman Lee Vogel as he continues to recover. Just pray for the safety of, of all of our public servants as they serve us in various capacities throughout the county and the city of Danville. Thank you all for being here tonight. We'll get started with our public hearing. Pursuant to Article 5, Division 7 of the Pittsvenny County Zoning Ordinance, we, the planning commissions, have been empowered to hear and decide specific applications in support of said ordinance and to make recommendations to the Board of Supervisors and the Board of Zoning and Appeals. In accomplishing this important task, we're charged with promoting the health, safety, general welfare of the citizens of Pittsvenny County. We must ensure that all of our decisions and recommendations be directed to these goals and that each be consistent with the environment, the comprehensive plan, and in the best interest of Pittsvenny County, its citizens, and its posterity. Anyone here to speak to the board regarding these zoning cases tonight will be limited to three minutes. At 7:06, case R-25-018 is now open for public hearing. Mr. Arnold.
Case R-25-018, A&amp;S Investments LLC has petitioned to rezone a total of 0.528 acres located on State Road 718/Trifork Road in the Chatham Blair's election district from A1 Agricultural District to B2 Business District, general, to allow the property be consolidated with an adjacent property currently zoned B2. Once the property is rezoned to B2, all uses listed under Section 35-365 are permitted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet and Mr. Chairman Samantha Thomas is here to represent the petition.
Mrs. Thomas? Do you have anything to add to the packet or, okay, thank you. Does anyone to sign up to speak to this case? All right?
Yes, sir.
All right. At 7:07, public hearing for this case is now closed. Mr. Brown.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna represent Mr. Shelton on this case. He couldn't be here tonight. But in case R-25-018, I would like to make a recommendation of approval of the rezoning from A1 to B2.
A motion by Mr. Brown, is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second.
Second by Mr. Webb, thank you, gentlemen. Please cast your vote when prompted. Motion for recommendation of approval in this case passes, five yes, zero no, and one abstention. At 7:08, case R-25-020 is now open for public hearing. Mr. Arnold.
Case R-25-020, Jerry Barker has petitioned to rezone 12.6881 acres located off State Road 671/Midway Road in the Bannister Election District from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District to consolidate with an adjacent property. Once the property is rezoned to A1, all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted. On July 7th, 2025, the plant, oh, excuse me, that's irrelevant. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Jerry Barker is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Barker? Do you have anything that you would like to add? All right, thank you, sir. Anyone signed up to speak to this case?
No, sir.
All right. At 7:09, public hearing is closed. Mrs. Henderson.
Mr. Chairman, in the case of R-25, or R-25-020, I'd like to make a motion that we recommend to the Board of Supervisors that this petition be approved as requested.
Motion by Mrs. Henderson, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Mrs. Mies. Motion is approved, six yes, zero no. At 7:10, case S-25-014 is now open for public hearing. Mr. Arnold.
Case S-S-25-014, Robert Taylor has petitioned for a special use permit on 11.93 acres located on State Road 878 Duncan Drive Road in the Westover Election District to allow for a public garage mechanic shop in accordance with Pittsvenny County Code 35-223. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet and Mr. Chairman, Mr. Taylor is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Taylor? Yes, sir? Do you have anything that you'd like to say to this commission tonight?
Just wanted to say, I worked for a good year, 28 years and, um...
Pull that microphone up just a little bit.
I worked for a good year, 28 years, and I chose to take a buyout. I've always loved working on calls and I already have the shop there. Just wanted to do something I like to do until I get a retirement age.
I got you. Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Wait, Mr. Chairman.
Yes?
I do have, if we recommend approval of your case, are you okay with the two stipulations that the county's made as far as repairs have to be inside the structure? And you gotta comply with Chapter 9 as far as inoperable vehicles? Were you aware of those two conditions?
I'm not aware of all the conditions. I got a cousin that runs a shop right here in Chatham. He was gonna help me out, teach me what I needed to know about...
Basically, you gotta, you gotta conduct inside the facility as far as the repair.
Yes, sir.
And then any inoperables have to comply with the county code.
Right.
So you're, you're okay with those?
I'm willing to do what I gotta do.
Okay, all right.
All right, thank you, Mr. Taylor. Is anyone else here to speak to this case tonight?
We did have one person sign up.
Yes, sir. Come on up. Please state your name for the record.
Gary Abbott. I'm a neighbor right across the road there. Only thing I don't, only thing I got concerns about is fluids leaking out of the automobiles, possible getting in the oil system. That's, that's all I've got concerns about.
Okay.
It's, that's all.
All right. Any other discussion on this case? At 7:13, public hearing is now closed. Mr. Webb?
Mr. Chairman, in regards to case S-25-014, I would recommend approval to the zoning board with the two stipulations that county staff has provided.
Right. It just, I know it's in the record, but I'll read those for Mr. Taylor. Repair activities shall be contained within an enclosed structure. And then number two, inoperable vehicles shall comply with Chapter 9 of the Pittsvenny County Code and must be stored in an area screened in accordance with PCC 35-121. If you have any questions about that, yes? Can you come up to the microphone, please? Thank you, ma'am. State your name.
Andrea Brandon.
Okay.
And I'm with Mr. Taylor. And could you explain the last one to me, what, what you're talking about as far as stored properly, like?
Must be stored in, in a screened-in area.
Okay.
And those details are available at the, at the county plant.
Like a privacy fence?
Yes.
Like a privacy, okay.
That's right. And the description of that fence is, is available to you at the Community Development Office if you have any questions about that.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay.
I appreciate that, sir, thank you.
All right. Okay, Mr., sorry. Mr. Webb?
Okay, again, as it relates to case S-25-014, I make a motion that we recommend approval to the zoning board.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Webb, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Oaks. And I apologize for the lack of order there, it's my fault. Motion passes, six yes, zero no. At 7:15, case S-25-015 is now open for public hearing. Mr. Arnold.
Case S-25-015, Charles and Geraldine Dawson have petitioned for a special use permit on 2.35 acres located on State Road 628 Harmony Road in the Stanton River Election District to allow for the placement of a single-wide manufactured home in accordance with Pittsvenny County Code 35-223. Staff summary is enclosed in the board packet and Mr. Chairman, Mr. Dawson is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Dawson? Is Mr. Dawson here? No? All right.
Okay.
Is there anyone else here to speak to this case?
The one that signed up.
Okay. Can you please state your name?
Yes, I'm Geraldine Dawson.
Okay.
My husband is Charles Dawson and we was required a hearing to rezone our land for a trailer for our son.
Yes, ma'am. Did you have any, anything else that you would like to add?
No, didn't have anything else.
Okay, is this a, is this a new, new trailer or is this a used?
Yes, it's a new one.
A new one, okay. All right, thank you, ma'am. At 7:17, public hearing is closed for this case. Mr. Webb?
Mr. Chairman, in regards to case S-25-015, I make a motion of approval to the board, uh, zoning board for this case.
Motion by Mr. Webb, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Mrs. Henderson. Motion is approved, six yes, zero no. At 7:17, case S-25-016 is now open for public hearing. Mr. Arnold.
Case S-25-016, Juan and Dora Hernandez have petitioned for a special use permit on 2.23 acres located on State Road 845 Hinesville Road in the Tunstall Election District to allow for the placement of a double-wide manufactured home in accordance with Pittsvenny County Code 35-223. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet and Mr. Chairman, Mr. Hernandez is here to represent the petition and also Robert Harris with Clayton Homes from Reedsville is also here on the Hernandez behalf.
Okay. Mr. and Mrs. Hernandez or Mr. Harris? Yes, ma'am. Did, did you all have anything that you'd like to add? Okay, all right, thank you. Anyone else sign up to speak to this case?
No, sir.
All right. Then at 7:18, public hearing is closed. Mr. Oaks?
Mr. Chairman, in case S-25-016, I make a motion that we approve issuing a special use permit on this lot.
Motion by Mr. Oaks, is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mrs. Mies. Motion is approved, six yes, zero no. At 7:19, case S-25-017 is now open for public hearing. Mr. Arnold?
Case S-25-017, Robert and Trinity Rowland have petitioned for a special use permit on 6.19 acres located on State Road 57 Halifax Road in the Bannister Election District to allow for a public garage mechanic shop in accordance with Pittsvenny County Code 35-223. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet and Mr. Chairman, Mr. Rowland is here to represent the petition.
All right. Mr. Rowland? Yes, sir? Do you have anything that you'd like to say? All right. I believe we have several signed up to speak to this case and I'll give you a chance if there's any questions they have for you to respond. Who was the first person we had signed up?
We have Tanya Reynolds.
Tanya Reynolds? Good evening, Ms. Reynolds.
Um, well, it's an inherited land in a peaceful rural part of Virginia surrounded by farmland, family homes, and natural beauty. There's now a proposal to build a garage for working on cars and to change, to issue a special permit to allow that kind of commercial use. And if we say it's only a one-time thing, respectfully ask you to consider what it really means. Even one exception creates precedent. Once it's changed, it opens doors to future projects that may not align with the quiet residential nature of this area. A garage like this would bring increased traffic, noise, disruption, things that simply don't belong in this kind of setting. I care about the land and the people who live nearby and respectfully ask that this proposal, proposal be denied so the character of the community can be preserved. And thank you for your time and thoughtful consideration.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Who else did we have, Mr. Arnold?
We have Sally Lintecum.
Pull that microphone down close, there you go.
My nieces and I own land just below this track and this is an old established residential area. It's been, it's been residential for years and it's no place for any business. It would just change the environment. So I request that you not grant this special permit.
Anyone else here this evening to speak to this case? All right. Mr. Rowland, did you want to respond? And if you do, please come up to the podium. Good evening. Sounds like neighbors might have some concerns.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. I'd be glad to address the concerns with them. The shop's gonna be back away from the road. You're not gonna be able to see it from the road.
Mr. Rowland, you can just speak to the microphone and address, address us if you would.
Yes, sir. The, the shop's gonna be away from the road. It's gonna be back off of the knoll. You're not gonna see it from the highway, no, no kind of which way. Can you see it from the highway? It's gonna be small. I'm gonna be the only one operating it. I run a business in Gretna now. I run an automotive shop, been running it for six years. We keep it clean, we keep it neat and nice. Traffic is not gonna be a lot. I've already had V-Dot come out and look. The traffic that I would pull in, they said would be fine for the size of the driveway we have and everything going there. I just, I would like for it to pass and it's gonna be a small shop. It's not gonna be a lot of people working there, just me. And just would like to have it at my house if I want to do something. I can there. I'm already running a business. I'm not planning on closing right away. I may close in the future and just operate completely from home. But I'd like a shop at my house to do some projects out of and work out of if I would like to. I'm in Gretna. I live in Chatham. I would like to bring the business back to Chatham, some of it. And it's gonna be a 30 by 50 garage. And like I said, it's far enough away from the road. It's at the, I wouldn't say at the back, but almost at the back of our property line. I've got a map that I can give them to show them where this would be at if that's okay.
Do you have that copy, that map?
I do have, I've got several copies here. Do you?
If you don't mind, give it to Mr. Arnold and he'll, he'll pass it.
Okay.
Pass it around for us. Or if you have several copies, that would be good.
And other than that, I...
All right. Why do we have Mr. Rowland? Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Rowland?
I have one, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Rowland, approximately...
Mr. Rowland, approximately how many houses are neighbors' populations around you with this site?
Um, there is... Can I show you this map?
Yeah. Looking, looking at this map that we have in the packet, Mr. Rowland, it looks like, it looks like across the, across the street, you have a, a lot of residential lots.
There's...
Am I understanding that map right?
Yes, sir, there's, there's several houses across the street. On my side of the street, there's only two, uh, right through. Well, us is three, on this side of the road.
And you, you said you currently have a business location in Gretna? Okay. And so you, you, I think you had mentioned that this was a transition that you were hoping to make over...
Yes, eventually it is. Um, just would like to be back in Chatham, I live in Chatham, I've been in Chatham my whole life and I would like to be back in Chatham. It's not gonna be something right away and I'm gonna be the only one working there, um, as far as that. I don't wanna run a huge garage like you have in Chatham, I don't wanna run nothing huge, I just want something to support me and my family and that's what I do and want to continue doing that.
Okay.
I got a question.
Yes, sir, Mr. Brown?
I had it where it was really clear a minute ago, well, on the way I'm reading it, you're, the driveway comes in and splits between you and the neighbor, right?
Yes.
So instead of coming through what would appear to be your road frontage area, it almost looks like an easement.
They have...
The way the driveway comes down in between the property line.
They have an easement to our driveway.
Okay.
The, the map, we could not get it to print on the map, but it is our property.
The, um, the county's west side, the, the west side has the property kind of offset a little bit.
I see that, okay.
So it actually looks like the, um, neighbor's driveway and actually it's house driveway, so the, 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 I don't know, on the map, it has to find where the driveway is actually one mile off.
I understand. So the shop to me is a couple hundred yards back off the actual highway?
Yes, it's way back. Yeah, uh, you can, it's a, if you look up our driveway, it's a three-car garage that's parked there now.
I see it on the map.
And it's gonna be on behind that, there's, there's no way you can see it from the highway. Yeah, well...
Well, that's why I was asking, because I was like, they own a lot of road frontage right there, but it would have to be right through the middle of the woods to break the driveway.
Yeah, no, no.
I got you.
So...
Well, those trees gonna help give privacy to it, you know, it's...
Yeah, no, you can't, it's a, it's a field back there that a lot of people don't even know is back there, coming down the road.
And, 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 yes, ma'am. Mr. Chairman, I see, uh, he says we'll designate a minimum of four parking spots. So to me, that's not gonna be a lot of activity there.
Well, I can put in...
Yeah.
Yes, because they've got a big field and I'm gonna put a big gravel lot out there and the storage is gonna be a fence put in for cars like they were. Um, they just told us it would have to be a minimum of that when we applied for it. I can do whatever I need to do as far as that goes.
Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions? Alright, thank you, Mr. Rowland. Yes, sir. Sir? Yeah? Please state your name for the record.
It's Jerry Oaks. I live less than half a mile below where he's talking about building and when you turn off twenty-nine, head down fifty-seven, I mean, it's, once you pass Bedford Co-op, it's all agricultural, it's all residential for miles. And we would like to continue to keep it that way. And, you know, it's, it's quiet, we have enough trucks running up and down that road now, logging trucks going both ways and we would, we would prefer to keep it as quiet as possible and not have developed commercial properties. Somebody made the comment that once you get one piece of commercial property there, then it's, will continue. So, we just, if you would, for all of our sake, to live on that road, we'd like to keep it agricultural and residential. Thank you.
And what was your name again, I'm sorry?
Jerry Oaks.
Jerry Oaks, okay, thank you, sir. Any other discussion? It's an open public hearing, if you want to speak, you can, you come up, state your name for the record again, please.
My name's Tanya Reynolds and it's certainly not trying to, not letting anybody take opportunity for their land or anything, it's just that it does set a precedent, you know, once you do it, then somebody else is gonna want it, you know, could, they may or may not, but want it, you know, have something else and something else and something else. And it does change the face of the property, the, the whole area, you know, because it's, the Rollins, I'm sure are nice people and, you know, and nothing personal, but it's just the fact that once, you, once you make an exception, it makes it easier to make a lot more exceptions and that's, that's my concern.
I understand, thank you. Alright, is anybody that hasn't already spoken, they would like? Okay.
And this is kind of out of my question honestly, but I know a lot of these people are worried about agriculture and stuff like that. This is actually my family and our family is F.A. Cates and I don't know if anybody knows who's F.A. Cates is around here, but he was on the board supervisor for thirty years. And nobody knows agriculture more than that man to me. And when these people are, they're just trying, like I said, to do something like they said, small and for their home, but just everybody knows about agriculture, they are people you could talk to and that's, I saw the one saying, that's it, just...
Alright, I would, uh, anybody else? Yes, ma'am? Please state your name.
Hi, my name is Ellen McGregor Toler and I live across Highway fifty-seven from the Rollins and, well, directly across from me is Mrs. Harris, who is in the brick home that shares the driveway with the Rollins. And my mother, Betty McGregor, she lives, well, Hillcrest Road is between my house and my mother's and she looks at the woods that is their property. And we're just concerned that later on, if, if he starts out with a small garage, is he gonna wanna later build something larger and expand his business and, you know, we just, we don't wanna look at that and we don't wanna hear that. But this, the tranquility of the neighborhood is nice now, except for all the logging trucks that we have to hear going up and down the road. Um, and then my brother lives on the other side of me and we just kinda got, you know, a nice little neighborhood there. They're very nice people and it's nothing personal. I talked to Trinity yesterday at the mailbox and asked her a few questions and I don't know if we could maybe put a proffer in there saying that they would never cut those woods in the front of their lot. Um, but we're just concerned about that, that they want to maybe expand later on and have something larger. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, last call, any other discussion or questions?
Mr., um, I'd like to just make a statement.
Yes?
Um, the Rollins, I want to tell you all, personally, I appreciate you coming to the board and, um, bringing this, you know, you're aspiring and you are an established business owner, I live in Gretna and I must say that you all have indeed run a very clean business. If anyone is familiar with their integrity and the business that they run, there's no issues there, right on Highway forty, super busy area and they have maintained it impeccably. However, I do hear the concerns of the community and I do think just as, as a community, we have to kind of go back and reflect on just being neighbors first and then business later. And when we make the decisions, we're weighing all of that, so I don't want anyone to feel slighted in any direction that we go, but, uh, we appreciate what you're doing, but yes, we are listening. So I just wanted to make this statement.
Thank you, Ms. Henderson. Um, I would, I would just add too, th- this being zoned R-one residential suburban subdivision district as it is now, um, it's a, it's a little bit of a stretch, I think, for me to, to see approving this one just because of the, like, like the gentlewoman said, it, it sets a precedent that I don't think, uh, we, you know, would, would wanna set with our current comprehensive plan being the way it is. I absolutely understand, uh, the desire to, to work close to home, um, but having a shop working on others, on other vehicles that belonging to other folks and having a business, um, would, would no doubt, even out of sight, uh, change, kind of change that situation right there as you approach twenty-nine. Any other questions or comments? At seven thirty-five, public hearing is closed for this case. Um, this, this is you, right, Ms. Henderson? Ms. Henderson?
Well, um, in this case, uh, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion, um, that we recommend to the board of zoning appeals to approve this, um, as it is presented.
Motion by Ms. Henderson. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Oaks. Please cast your vote when prompted. Uh, motion fails, two in favor, four against. At seven thirty-seven, case Z dash two-five dash zero-zero-one is now open for public hearing.
Case Z dash two-five dash zero-zero-one, Guy Williamson slash Gray Outdoors LLC has petitioned for a sign permit on thirty-point-eight-one acres located on U.S. Highway twenty-nine South in the Bannister Election District for an off-site illuminated double-sided three-hundred-square-foot panel sign in accordance with Pennsylvania County Code thirty-five dash one-hundred. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, I believe Wayne Ferris is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Ferris? Mr. Ferris out there in the hallway, maybe? Nope? Alright, anyone else signed up to speak to this case?
We do not have anyone signed up.
Alright. At seven thirty-eight, public hearing is closed. Ms. Henderson?
Yes, sir. In this case, bear with me a second.
Take your time, that's fine.
Alright. In the case of Z twenty-five dash, um, zero-zero-one, I'd like to, I make a motion that we do recommend to the board of, let's see, this would be board supervisors?
I believe so. This motion would be made for recommendation to the board of supervisors, is that correct? Or zoning appeals?
It should be zoning appeals.
Zoning appeals.
Zoning appeals that we approve, um, this petition has been submitted.
Motion by Ms. Henderson, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Webb. Motion carries, six in favor, zero against. Old business? Do you have any old business?
No, sir.
Any new business?
No, sir.
No? Um, I would ask, Mr. Arnold, do you have, before we, before we adjourn, any updates on where, where things are with the progression of the, uh, negotiations with, uh, the vendor for the comprehensive plan?
No, sir, not at this time. Uh, however, I do expect there to be an update, uh, in the coming weeks, uh, as we approach the August nineteenth board meeting.
Good enough, thank you, Mr. Arnold. Anybody have anything else? Seven forty, we're adjourned.